It's been moved in second at all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Minutes have been passed. Public comment time, public comment period, we will accept public comment now. Please remember there is a, an open public hearing after this about the budget. So if you're here to talk about that, just kind of wait for a minute. The public comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to three minutes. On recognition by the mayor pro tem, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give your name and address. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No, or mayor pro tem, no person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once. Speakers should not expect any debate with the mayor, city council, or city staff. The mayor, city council, or city staff may respond after the comment, after the comment period has concluded. And speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the city council. With that, we'll call up speaker number one.
Mike Markham, she's got my address. I just wanted to ask a quick question. I asked this once before. I don't know if we missed the, the boat or what happened, but I made a comment when Smith Entertainment Group decided to buy the hockey game, hockey team. We have a really good hockey rink out here, but I see they had to go buy an entire mall to build a new hockey rink. So did, was there ever, now Karen told me staff had been working with them, but I don't, was there any solid communication with Smith Entertainment Group to try to capture some of those dollars for out here in West Valley at our ice rink? You know, that would have cost them a whole lot, whole lot less to buy the Maverick Center than what they paid to buy the entire mall. And so I don't know what they're doing and not that it affects us unless the county decides to up sales tax too. I'm going to be, I'm really irritated that they can buy a mall, but that they expect the taxpayers of Salt Lake City to build their entertainment complex in Salt Lake. We just keep making rich people richer. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker number two.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. The last month or so, the council has been looking into sign ordinances and changing several things. We need to go a little deeper. One thing is campaign signs. We need to set a time limit after a person has lost or the races are over. That signs need to be taken down. I, I know there, there's council member up here that, that looks at it as litter and I agree, once the, the campaigns are over, it is litter. There, there is a temporary sign mentioned about removing signs in the ordinance about two weeks, but it doesn't specifically say campaign signs. I think this is something to be an easy fix and something that the city should look into. The other issue is our code enforcement. They need to be out there. Moratorium's coming up in a month. Moratorium only applies to the landscaping, but there's still the, the one property, you know, that I put in and they responded, that hole in the fence. Well, now instead of, there was a broken post, now the post is even broken more and a whole panels popped out. And that same residence now parked an RV on the side of their house, which faces the street, no fence. So it's, it's getting worse. That's just one example. There, there's several things throughout the city. Our code enforcement needs to be out there. They need to be doing their job. I think they need to have a, um, once again, a standard operating procedure on what they need to be looking for and what they need to be doing. So I've been asking for that for years. That's all I have for this part.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
Hi, I'm Heather Brooks. My address is two eight 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 West LeMay Avenue. Um, I'm here because of the property tax is increasing again this year. Last year, my tax was increased by eighteen hundred dollars. I don't think that it should be increased anymore. Um, and also the street uh, going by my house, whenever the street sweeper comes through, it picks up chunks of asphalt from the sides of the street and drags it down the street. So that, um, they're not doing a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four.
How's it going? Been here before, coming back just because it's an issue that hasn't been resolved, but the problem that I'm facing in my street is just homeowners are renting out their basements to multifamilies. So there's sometimes boarding rooms going on, there's up to fifteen, twenty people living in these basements. And the strange thing is the owners live upstairs in a lot of these situations and beyond me why you would do that, but that's the issue with the street and, and how it affects me in, in my life is the neighborhood's less safe. Um, there's cars blocking the sidewalk, so you can't really see when a car's coming. So when a five-year-old's riding a bike, like my son, two weeks ago, almost got hit by a car, which obviously you gotta keep him out of the street, but when there's so many cars blocking a four-lane street, you can't see it and the car can't see when they come out, so it's dangerous. Driveways are blocked. There's vendors outside selling food purchased from other countries or selling alcohol. I've reported this to police, they don't come. Um, there's other homemade foods that they're, they're selling as well, and so the fix would be to enforce the city municipal code. Um, I know it's hard to do with these houses because you gotta prove a bunch of stuff, but there are listings online where you can go see that these are, these are listed for rentals on Facebook and KSL, so they're obviously renting them out. But all I'm asking is to block off the curbs overnight. I know that's been discussed a couple of months ago. It's an easy fix. Block it from ten PM till six AM or midnight till five AM, whatever you want. But these cars need to be off the street. Uh, fire trucks can't get there if, if there's a, you know, a fire in the house. There's, I can't get my trash cans in front of my house because there's cars blocking the curbs to do that. So I have to put in front of my driveway, which is insane. Um, you know, obviously the overall safety there, um, that just comes with having so many people and so many cars there. So, uh, you'll keep hearing from me. I'll reach out to you guys via email. Appreciate you listening to me, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any others that would like to speak in this comment portion? Your name and address, please.
My name is Josh Cedarholm. I live at forty-three fifty-eight West Courtney Drive. So I'm here tonight to see if I can get an issue resolved. We've made several calls about the golf course. I understand my house backs a golf course. I do not understand why we keep getting so many golf balls at my house. I have three different neighbors in the same line of houses. We've called the golf course. They tell us, call the city. We call you guys. They say, call the golf course. At this point, nobody wants liability. They've told us, well, you need to track down, see what golfer hit the ball. Well, the balls don't always come when we're home. I can't sit home. I can't, I don't know who's hitting the balls, but we're getting damage in all the houses, cars. My wife's almost been hit out in front of my house before from a random golf ball. So I'm just trying to see if we can get some kind of resolution for me, the neighbors. I mean, I'm getting houses, I'm getting golf balls that are clearing my house, going across the street, hitting the neighbors' houses. Like, I just don't understand. We've asked to maybe lengthen the net at the tee where the balls are being hit. We've been told it's not in the budget. Well, I understand, but at the same time, all our property is getting damaged. Somebody's gonna get hit eventually and it could possibly kill somebody, a kid, a grown-up, you name. So I'm just here reaching out, seeing if we can try and get some kind of resolution for the golf ball issue. Because it's, there's a lot of damage happening. And at the same time, I understand we have homeowners, we have that, but I feel like with it being Stonebridge Golf Course, West Valley City owned, there's got to be some kind of resolution or something that we can try and figure out. So that's, I have all the neighbors here, they all have the same issues. They all have young kids, animals, vehicles, like I, I just don't know what else to do. Nobody wants liability for it. And it's, I don't understand why we have to claim our insurance. Our insurance goes up because of damage from a golf course. I can't keep track of who's hitting balls. I, I just, I'm trying to figure out what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Peely, anything you have?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Maybe I can respond to some of these, uh, these questions that have come up. I don't have any real solutions or resolutions right now, but I will maybe share some things that we've been working on. So, but I've, I've made some notes with, uh, some of the things that have been been presented. Uh, the boarding houses is a big, it's a big issue uh, throughout the entire city. And, uh, we've, we've gone through, I know the council is, is even before I got here, well before, uh, been trying to work through these issues with staff as well. As we've contemplated the closure of streets, uh, having a, a curfew, it becomes real problematic because you have to do that for the whole city. And, um, one of the issues is not penalizing those that do have, um, who are complying and, um, that have maybe more than a couple of cars, maybe have teenagers, maybe have people that come visit. So we're trying to figure out, uh, we, we've gotten a plan in place to educate, to investigate, to, council has given that mandate to us to, to find solutions for that, but you'll, you'll hear some more, some more brought forward, some more solutions maybe bring, uh, brought forward here in the future. Um, like, again, I know the council has mandated that with, with staff, and so we're working through that. Fortunately, no real solutions besides if you do find that, if you do have, and, and we, and we are able to to find out if this is, if they are housing people outside of the code, we, we do enforce and we do, uh, investigate and so we can probably talk more about how we go about specifically on the streets. Um, the golf balls is a, is, is an interesting topic too. It's, it's tough. I've, I've managed cities. In my last two cities I've managed, we've had golf, golf course city-owned and also just several golf courses within the community. When you, you know, it is unfortunate, when you do live next to a golf course, that's what they'll tell you, right? This is that you have, you've moved into an area that has a golf course. If there are, if there are opportunities to lengthen some of those netting, I guess we'll, we'll take a look at that. We'll look and talk to our, our, uh, our golf course management to see what it is. Um, a lot of times they're not coming from the team. Where they're not coming from that area, they're coming from all over the course. And so, um, we'll just have to take a look at that. I can get, get with staff to see. The, the taxes, we'll, we'll explain, we need to clarify and we'll explain in the, the item that's coming up here in a, in a little bit and I'm sure you'll, you'll be able to understand and, and what we're, what we're really dealing with. A lot of those tax increases that you may have experiences, experienced in the past have not come from the city. Um, but we'll, we'll explain that further in our, our discussion. And then ma'am, if we can get with you on the street sweeper, your street, where, where it is, um, we can take a look at what's going on there. So if you can, we can get your street, we can get with our staff to see what's, what's going on. This is, Mayor Pro Tem, this is all I have notes on. Wish there were more, more to respond to, but feel free to, to continue the conversation as well afterwards.
And we as a council will have made notes of the concerns also. And they will be coming up on future agenda items as we suggest them, so. If they don't show up quickly, get back to us, let us know. Any other council members have any comments? Okay. One thing I'd like to say is, uh, I'm not trying to badmouth him or anything else, but Smith Entertainment Group wants to do their own thing. We were discussing with them, we've been in negotiations. They want to do their own thing. So, and I took that up to the Senate, State Senate too, and the senator says, no, he just wants to build something farther south. Okay, you know, I can offer all I want, but if they don't want to take the offer, you know, it's kind of like that proverbial horse.
Don, say something. Thank you. I do want to echo what Don just said. We're in this business, not competing with our Smith Entertainment or group or whatever. We're in a business to attack of the city residents in this city. That period. Yeah. So we're not going to spend money go out there and compete with the investors or companies, A, B, C, or X, Y, Z. No. To be honest with you, that's not the way we run in here in this city.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Uh, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. And we'll be accepting public input regarding the budget of West Valley City for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And we'll invite Jim Welch, our finance director, to the podium to provide our budget presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, as was mentioned, this is the, um, the budget hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And this is also, uh, what is termed a truth in taxation hearing, which is a process whereby, uh, a governmental entity in, in the state can adjust the property tax rate. Um, I will go through the, uh, the, from a high level on what the budget is. And then we'll talk about the property tax hearing. There have also been some changes that have occurred in state law in order to hold this hearing, and I will go through those to make sure that we comply entirely with state law. Uh, this year's, the budget is a hundred thirteen million dollars. And, um, it comprises of basically, and we have the revenues which are basically comprised of uh, about two-thirds come from taxes, that's sales taxes and property taxes. Uh, the largest chunk is sales tax, which tends to be a little bit volatile, given that we have, um, uh, economic downturns and economic booms. It just kind of depends on what happens there, but we've done very, very well with sales tax. And then there's property tax, which is really the only revenue aside from fee adjustments that the city has control over, and that's by design. Uh, the state legislator has given the power to control the, uh, property taxes for municipalities and other uh, types of entities that, um, service districts so that they can stabilize their revenue and also uh, provide the services that are required by their citizens. Uh, the other third of our revenues are by licenses, permits, uh, our investments for interest, um, and a couple of other things like that. So there's a pretty good, pretty good balance of three different major revenue sources. The expenditures, as you might expect, a little bit over fifty percent of the money that is brought in by the city in the general fund, that's what we're presenting right here, uh, goes towards public safety. Uh, our largest, largest general fund budget is for the police department and then the fire department. And then, um, under city operations, community support, aside from public works and parks, that would comprise all the other operations of the city. Uh, so that's, that's how the expenses, uh, show up. Excellent, please. So tonight, um, I mentioned that we are in the process of the public hearing for the purpose of adjusting the tax rate. Uh, this is the notice that was published in the newspaper. We're required to publish this at least twice. And, uh, this one states that, uh, the amount, this is actually a hearing for the collection of what's called a judgment levy. Now that's different than a property tax increase to create additional revenue for the city. What a judgment levy is, is when a, a number, one or a number of larger businesses, protest the value of their assessment, which means they go to the Board of Appeals and they say, I believe that I have been overtaxed for either one year or multiple years. And then they appeal through that process. Uh, that appeal is considered and if the appeal is found in their favor, then a judgment is awarded to them, which means that they have been overpaying for a number of years and they get basically a check that says we're going to pay you back the money that you've been overpaying. Because truth and taxation laws in the state allow a city or municipality to only collect the money each year that they collected last year, plus new construction. This essentially means that the rest of the taxpayers have been underpaying, have been over, have been underpaying because these larger entities have been overpaying their taxes. So rather than create a hole in the budget, for example, this year, our, uh, judgment levies was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred dollars. That would be money that they would take out of the revenue that we would normally collect. Um, they allow one-time adjustment in the rate to collect a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars from the rest of the taxpayers that have been underpaying as a result of the judgment. Um, this particular notice gives some detail. It says that the impact on the average residence of four hundred twenty-six thousand, which is determined by the county, is an impact of about three dollars and twenty-eight cents for one year. And then the impact on a business will be about five dollars and ninety-six cents. Um, I'd like to emphasize that this is a one-time adjustment. This does not go on year after year. This simply covers that one-time hole that's created by the, uh, appeal and the rebate to these businesses. So it's not an ongoing, uh, adjustment. There's not additional revenue. Uh, there's no ability to increase our services because of this adjustment. It simply covers a hole in the budget because some, some of these larger businesses have appealed their, uh, tax rates. Uh, the judgment levy, uh, varies from year to year. It makes sense because the, uh, the entities that are protesting, they, they're all different each year. So we've seen them as low as twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, which isn't a lot. Uh, up to, up over three million dollars, which makes a substantial difference on the city's ability to meet their, meet their obligations. Um, one of the reasons that, uh, the city council a number of years ago, and I think this is probably, I would say sixteen, seventeen years, it's been a long time that we have held this hearing every single year, regardless of the amount, for a couple of purposes. Uh, the first one is to, um, allow the public to become a little bit more educated on the process of, of property taxes. Uh, so they understand that the rate is not really what determines the amount that you pay. It's the amount of revenue that goes to each of the taxing entities. Uh, as you can see on the slide, it says tax rate history. Last year, our property tax rate was actually less. It was point zero zero two seven five eight. This year, uh, with the adjustment, it's point zero zero two five, uh, eight six. Uh, so it's actually point two six percent less than it was last year. So people say, well, why didn't my property tax go down? Well, because it's based on revenue, not the rate. What happened is the value of your home went up, so the rate came down. And that's, that's what happens on a global issue. Your individual rates are going to vary somewhat to that. Some peoples go up, some people go down. If yours went up, I guarantee you somebody else's went down, unless one of the other taxing entities like the school district, an abatement district, a service district, increase their property tax rates also. Uh, by now you've probably all received your property tax notices, at least a preliminary notice on your, um, on your home, if you own a home. And on that, it will list all the taxing entities and the change in rate that they're proposing. So this is the notice that we proposed. Uh, next slide shows the changes that were made by the legislature in the last session. It was Senate Bill number twenty-nine. There's a few things that they do require. Um, and this is the verbiage that they give us. Uh, they want us to de- declare the recurring ad valorem tax revenue that will be generated each year by the adjustment. The answer to that question is zero. There is no recurring revenue that will occur each year. As I mentioned before, this is one time to cover a hole. Now we'll probably be back before you again with another judgment like next year for the purpose of education and filling that hole that is covered by these rebates. But this particular adjustment has no recurring impact on revenue. Uh, the statement of the amount, a hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred. Um, I mentioned that before. Um, also the purpose of the, uh, judgment of the tax rate must be disclosed and that's that we are, um, collecting the judgment tax levy as allowed in state code. Uh, the other thing that they require us to do, which is new this year, is to, um, to present, uh, the list of the consolidated rate change proposals for the county. Now this notice is also printed in the newspaper and various other, uh, media locations. I know it's on the state, um, state public notice website. And, uh, this indicates the other entities within our county that are proposing property tax changes. Uh, you'll notice if you look at that, I know it's kind of small, the printing, but, uh, West Valley City is at the very bottom. We are the only one that is making an adjustment for judgment levy this year. Uh, all of the other ones are operational changes. And, um, the percentage increase is while important, it's probably the revenue increase that, that makes a big difference on those budgets. I think that's pretty much it. I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have, but I think that fulfills the need of the statute for the public hearing.
Thank you. Any questions from the city council?
I have one. Thank you, Don. Just wonder, I know, not talking generally speaking, um, your department, have you ever been studying like, uh, shell tax for maybe five years and seven years?
have you ever been studying like uh sale tax for maybe five years and seven years? Trying to figure out, we can keep a property tax now and we know the cell tech can support. Because the reason I'm asking you that question, you know, this city is uh incorporated in nineteen eighty. And a lot of people here, the scene, in is, in this, in this city is a senior citizens. And I ran into a lot of people uh like that and they were concerned about it. Were they concerned about where I'm going to get money to buy my medicine? You know, they have a whole box of, you know, I'm talking about, yeah, yeah, have a ticket every day. Um where can I get money to do X, Y, Z, A, B, C? Because they have certain income based on SSI or the money they get from very much fixed income. So you're thinking about keep property tax the same. Study cell tax because we have a population here by twenty, by thirty. Twenty by thirty, we have five hundred thousand people going to come to our county. We all know that because the county they come here very often and they reminding us about it. The last five years I've been looking at cell tax seem it's doing very stable. Even the inflation high, market bad here and there, but the cell tax is still very stable. The reason why, because the people moving to our city, I think more than we expected or increase every, every month and that people they spending money in cell tax. So I just wonder, are you thinking about, are you studying about cell tax the next seven years and?
Sure, Tom. Yeah, we uh, and I appreciate that councilman Hune, we uh, we take our, the projections very seriously. We put an awful lot of time into them, we actually begin the uh budget process nine months ago. So here we are, nine months of trying to put this bu- budget together, we'll get a couple of months respite, then we'll start up again in December. We track the, along with all of our revenues, not just sales tax, but we track sales tax on a daily, on a monthly basis. Uh we uh project those based on historical uh trends, based on economic expectations. And we base them also on the growth that's occurring within the city. So we know very well, uh as best as you can, the kind of property, uh the sales tax increases that we're going to have. And we also try and anticipate when it goes down because it actually does. And um when the economy goes down and people lose buying power, it's a lot more volatile than property tax. Property tax, you're always going to get the same amount eventually. Uh we have a history of collecting ninety-nine percent of our property tax that's due, so it's very, very stable. The bond rating agencies recognize this, uh the state recognizes this, that's why the legislator gave the city councils the ability to influence that. Uh sales tax, yeah, we do pretty well, there's good growth in there. Uh typically over the years though, and you can, you've been here a long time and, and everybody else on the council. Um we have really good years and then we have other years when it's maybe not so great. And um if you, we don't have the ability to influence the in, the uh sales tax collection, other than trying to bring new business in, which I think we have a very good economic development department, that's a high priority for them. So it's very important, uh I know that uh the city tries to do their best to bring that in and increase those sales taxes. Uh it's, it's certainly a major piece of the puzzle and it helps offset any potential need for a property tax increase.
Yeah, also maybe, excuse me, maybe you're thinking about bringing more businesses like uh so can have a hundred percent of property tax. And resident true area, maybe we have only seventy percent, something like that, you guys can work in our, maybe study something like that. We have four to people here in our city, you know, that's my, my thought, you know what I'm saying?
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
So Jim, this shows a hundred percent tax increase, but uh our tax rate is actually going down, right?
Yeah.
So the, the reason it's a hundred percent, I'm, I'm not asking a question, I'm explaining it. Is because uh with the judgment levy, it's, it's going from zero to this tiny amount, but because you started zero.
Yeah, it's, it's not even a hundred percent.
The percent doesn't even make sense.
Yeah, you're correct, it's undefined.
So we're really not raising property taxes here. We're just trying to, to recover the taxes that we thought we should have gotten last year, but because of of the way the, the properties were assessed value and, and that, and people complained that we're, that uh they, they, they were taxed too much and we have to make up for that.
That is correct. They um, they would actually withhold this money from the tax that they collect and give it to the other entity this year and not, I mean, give it to the uh entity that appealed their values and withhold it from our revenues this year, so. And the reason it is, like you said, uh shows a hundred percent is because it's a zero basis. They would, if something is divided by zero, it's undefined, and so that's as close as they could put in there.
Is that typical that we would be the only entity on this list addressing a judgment levy? I, I find that interesting that everyone else is raising their operational taxes, but um I don't see anyone else with a levy.
Yeah, it's a good question. Um we uh are probably the most consistent entity in Salt Lake City, I mean Salt Lake County, my apologies. Um but um occasionally, I know Salt Lake City has done this on a fairly regular basis. Um often they'll do it for large amounts, uh so the time that we had was approximately three million dollars or a couple hundred thou- you know, maybe it's a half million dollars or so. Uh they, that judgment is not just imposed upon West Valley City, it's imposed across all of the entities that that particular business is paying property tax too. So it might be the school district, which would hold truth in taxation, it might be any other service district, so it's, this is a small piece of the pie. Um the reason that uh ours shows up the only time this year, this year is because it's a hundred ninety-two thousand. It's the equivalent of what we see, three dollars a year for uh a residence. It's, it's relatively insignificant, um but uh we felt that it's important to have this conversation before the public and before the council. Um it also is cumulative over the years. So for example, it's a hundred ninety-two this year, next year it might be three hundred thousand, the following year might be a couple hundred thousand. Within four years, you could have a million dollars of money that should have gone to public services that you were not able to fund, which would then possibly push us into the need to do an operational increase. So it's a way of balancing, uh bringing equity and um not every city uh has the kind of philosophy that we do with regards to the judgment levy.
Any other questions? Okay. Our next step then is to open the public hearing. Any of you who are, would like to speak on this subject, please come up to the, the podium and please identify yourself with name and home address.
Jim Vissok, five four one, five four nine one West Lockwood Drive. First, I want to, I thank Jim and his team um for the hard work that they put in this budget. But I also, and most people don't know this except for the few of us that are here all the time, is a lot of this, besides the staff, this budget was put together by an intern city manager, John Evans, whose profession is a fire chief, got to give him a lot of kudos, and an interim assistant city manager, who is now our assistant city manager, an HR guy, were able to put together a budget with staff that did not go up. It's the same numbers as basically twenty twenty-two, which is great, you got to give them some kudo, kudos. And they're, they're kind of behind the scenes things and this is something that people need to know. The other thing is, is people are talking about property taxes. When fifty-one percent of our budget is for our protection, fire and police, which I have no problem, but we only have thirty-one percent coming in from property taxes, the city's thirty-five square miles, thirty-five, a little over thirty-five million dollars is what that property tax is. So you figure in a square mile area, the property taxes is one million dollars. As a managing entity, do you think you can manage that for one million dollars a square mile with all the services and stuff? It's another way to look at it. I think this budget is extremely well done as a, a, as a general budget. What I'm hoping for is when the openings come out through the year is that each department head is accountable for their budget and when these big, huge expenses come up, that they're held accountable for their budget. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I do have about the same, oh I'm sorry, Mike Markham, three zero zero eight West Alice Way. I feel the same way as uh Jim does. Um I think that everybody has done a great job on the, on the budget this year, there's no increases with the exception of the three or four dollars that I'm probably involved with anyway. Um but I think you've done a great job and I like the way that Jim explains it to a guy that never made out it, out of dumbbell math. Um I just took your basic math and made it through. Um I've not yet in my business had to figure out how to add X, Y, Z and come up with four. So, but I think the idea of the way our taxes went this year, I hope we can meet all of our needs. Um but yeah, it was a great job, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone, I'm Carlos Moreno and a candidate for Salt Lake County Council District Two. I just wanted to spend time here with you guys to, to understand how you manage the city and also specifically in this specific topic, uh the budget. Uh you know, uh our community having a really hard time uh right now. And this uh, this uh topic gonna, gonna affect the life in, in any, in any matter, in any way. That's why um I'm here to learn, to, you know, to, to be a supportive for, for the community and also help in any, in any of my ability uh in this topic, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak about the budget? Anybody online? Okay, we will then close the public hearing. And we will open uh Resolution twenty-four dash one twenty-three to the council for action.
Mayor Pro Time, I would move to approve Resolution twenty-four dash one two three. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kaman.
Councilman Vittis Manu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Christensen.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, that ends our agenda for the night, uh we do not have a need for a public or a private closed session. Okay, thank you, one last.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning, please say bye.